All right, we're live.
Good evening. Good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the Select Board Meeting of January 21st, 2025. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, present tonight, Ms. Corbett, Ms. Whiteside, myself, Jared Chadwick. And absent is Ms. Quirk and Mr. Bessie, and Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Bowen.
They are online. I excused Mr. Sullivan unless we need him for something, but Mr. Bowen is here, so. Okay, may I have a pledge of allegiance? Mr. McClure.
Can you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Residents' comments, are there any individuals who choose to speak under residents' comments? Mr. Day? No? Okay, thank you. I'm going to jump right into appointments. Marilyn Springer, are you present? Can you step forward, please? Mr. McClure, you might as well come up too, and Mr. Alden, you might as well all come up. We'll do you, we'll knock you off one at a time. We have three appointments this evening. Two of them, well, all three of them are actually brand new, and what we'll do is one at a time, so Ms. Springer, if you could let us know what you're applying, first of all, identify yourself for the record, and tell us why you want to be joining the Council on Aging.
Well, Marilyn Springer, I'm going to celebrate my 20th anniversary here in Wareham, and I started doing some of the activities back in 2023 with the Council on Aging, and I was approached by Sharon Rice, she gave me some paperwork, fill it out, and I think you'd be a great addition, and I said, yeah, I have an interest.
Awesome, any questions?
None, thank you.
Thank you. What's your favorite activity?
Drum's alive, actually, I'm helping them out right now with that because Casslyn had surgery, the instructor.
Oh, cool.
So, yeah.
Neat, good for you. We have on the, Ms. Corbett has been working with the Council on Aging in terms of trying to get people to join, in terms of trying to get the minutes current, because they're not, and working to help bring it back to some strength and energy. So you may be seeing a lot of her at your meetings, you may see me from time to time, but I think, I think it's a great thing to do, so.
I think it's a good opportunity for me, I'm ready for it, I've been retired for eight years, and I took a lot of time for myself, so.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the, the appointments are staggered, they expire one, or, they're supposed to be nine members, so they would expire three in '25, three in '26, three in '27, that kind of thing, so we're trying to fill in the blanks, which is why some of these dates might look a little weird, okay?
Okay.
You want to do them all?
No, do, no, one at a time, please.
I move to appoint the Council on Aging as a member, Marilyn Springer, with a term to expire June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve Marilyn Springer, is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself? Aye, it is so. There's a lot of paperwork that needs to be accomplished, and the ladies in the office will send you an email telling you what you need to do in order to be sworn in. You can't, you can't vote until you've been sworn in, but certainly go to the meetings.
Okay.
Okay? And there's, they're online classes for the open meeting law and conflict of interest. They're, you can't fail, I can tell you that, because they keep making you go back and doing the question over again, so it's some paperwork, but we're looking forward to working with you.
And it would be Nancy Baker that would be?
Yes.
Sending me the paperwork?
Yes, okay, and she'll send you an email confirming that you should come in probably next week sometime, I'm not sure when.
Yeah.
Okay?
Sounds great.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. McClure?
I leave the table?
No. Mr. McClure, can you identify yourself for the record?
Shirley David McClure, one Red Pine Lane here in Wareham for the last 30 years, not a Red Pine Lane, because that road has not been there that long, but previous, that's the onset, I was previously on the Public Safety Building Committee for two and a half years, which I plan on being on the next Public Safety Building Committee, whenever that's put together, but that's, that's, that's a dream. My wife Carolyn was on the board, and she was told that she couldn't be on the board because she's part of the fundraising part of that group, and you can't be on the board and be fundraising and things like that, so Sharon Rice, the director, said that I should take her place, I'm not quite sure how that worked, but anyway, I'm going to take her, take her place here, I have the time to do it, the availability to do it, so. I was at the last meeting with Sarah, and it appears like the Council of Aging has some work to do, so we're going to get to work and do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Awesome, any questions?
None, thank you.
No? There is a word you should probably learn.
No. I did, I did, but when you've been married for 56 years, you forget that word.
And you probably, it's not in your vocabulary. Congratulations on that, I'll accept a motion.
I move to appoint as a member to the Council on Aging David McClure, with a term to expire June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve, as read, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Ms. Corbett? Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Alden?
Yeah, my name is Connor Alden, should I say like where I live too, or?
Yes, please.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I was born in Wareham, and right now I'm a resident at 21, excuse me, Warren Point Road in Wareham. Yeah, and today I'm coming before the board to talk about my application for the Zoning Board of Appeals as an associate member. Yeah, should I talk about my interest, do you have any questions first, or?
No, talk about your interest, do a sales job.
Yeah, sure. So I guess the Zoning Board of Appeals I've kind of always been vaguely aware of, my dad owns a local construction business, foundations, and so kind of, we're also family friends with one of the board members, Nazee, and so him and some other people whose opinions I value had recommended that I apply for the zoning board, I'm already involved with the town's redevelopment authority as an intern, so yeah, I see a lot of potential in Wareham, especially through the work with the redevelopment authority, and I see that there's a lot of potential to grow, and I think that the zoning board, especially joining as an associate member, is a great way to kind of get a feel for that kind of stuff without the responsibility of needing to vote on things.
Good learning spot.
Yeah, I think so, too.
As an associate on ZBA, you can move up if they need you for a quorum.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any questions?
No, but thank you.
Yeah, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. I did get a recommendation verbally from Mr. Iakabachi, and I also got an email recommendation from Mr. Alcolasi, I think I forwarded that to you. So everyone can't wait to have you join, which is great, and you did the paperwork, you said, right?
Yeah, I ended everything.
Okay, great, I'll accept a motion.
I move to appoint as an associate member to the Zoning Board of Appeals Connor Alden, with a term to expire June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to appoint, as read, is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so, thank you very much, all of you. You will get an email from Nancy Baker, and you'll go from there, and you cannot vote until you've been sworn in. Thank you very much. Is Brad Allen online? Would you let him into the meeting, please? We're going to move to 8B, which is discussion and possible vote to adopt new rates for the Emergency Medical Services Department, and Mr. Allen gave you, there's information in the packet, but, okay, good, excellent. Hi, Brad.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, can you identify yourself for the record, please?
Brad Allen, EMS Director for the Town of Wareham.
And you're here tonight to ask for us to approve some different fees and rates for the Emergency Medical Services, correct?
That's affirmative, ma'am, I'm looking to increase the rates as we have not done since 2019, which was prior to my tenure. As the document that I did send you, do you have it?
Yes.
So we did a comparison of the comparable rates of the local towns, some of them including Marion and the Town of Born, I know they're listed under unidentified clients, it was through our billing company, but we're looking to get up on par with what local towns are, we're looking to cover some of the costs, the increased costs of what we're unfortunately putting out, the increased cost of medical supplies, et cetera. So as you have the proposed increase of the rates plus mileage, and also dropping ancillaries, which will kind of make our billing a little bit easier. I can get into further if you need.
Can you just explain what ancillaries are?
Yeah.
So right now, we basically work off an itemized system where we bill one rate plus we, if you give O2, they give, you know, it's a small charge, it's additional small charges that add up to, in the end, we're looking to drop those, a lot of local towns have. It seems to be a way of the past as far as the billing procedure goes, it's more difficult, some of the providers may not document the, in a certain tab, which, you know, I think we're just, we're cutting ourselves short if we continue to bill the way we have in the past. So I'm looking to propose a flat rate increase for this year, and then also increase the rate we bill for mileage.
Excellent, and you did do a lot of homework with four other local, local carriers, if you will, and I think it's a great idea, to be honest with you. Any questions of Mr. Allen? Any questions of us? These would go into effect immediately, Mr. Allen?
Yes, as soon as I get the approval, I'll, I can forward that to our billing company, and we can set them effective, whether it's tomorrow or.
How about February 1st, or something like that?
Yeah, whatever, whatever date seems to work for us, but after your approval, we can move forward with it.
Okay. Go ahead.
Good. I move to adopt the new rates for the Emergency Medical Service Department.
Second.
As presented in a document.
As presented in the document.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve, as recommended to us, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Done. So.
Thank you.
That, we'll call it effective tomorrow, or as soon as you want to.
I'll, I'll send you a follow-up email when we put the rates into effect, but thank you all.
Great, thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, take care.
Yep. Let's do the curbside building, billing, item C, please.
Yep. I move to approve the request for payment for curbside billing fiscal year '25.
In the amount of?
Oh, there we go, hey, in the amount of $365, as requested by the Director of Municipal Maintenance Department.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve that abatement, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. We do have a 7:15 hearing. Discussion and possible vote to appoint a select board member to serve on the Community Events Committee, we have a vacancy from this board, and Ms. Corbett has volunteered, so you've done your homework, you know what you're getting into?
Yep.
Excellent, I'll accept a motion.
I move to appoint Ms. Corbett to the Community Events Committee.
Second.
And the term would end with her term, which would be?
Next year.
May of '26.
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve, is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so.
I do have a question.
Yep.
So what happens from here, how do they know that now I'm their liaison?
I've already.
No, you're actually a member. You're a voting member.
You're a member, you're a voting member.
Oh, okay.
We will.
I've already notified them.
Yeah, and.
Oh, okay.
And you just go tomorrow or call Nancy?
I notified them that I was off.
And it's what, it's what we call a slide over, so you will be effective tomorrow, you'll be on the board, and you are actually a voting member.
Okay, and so who do I contact?
Nancy.
Okay.
In the office.
And then she'll talk to?
No. Yeah, she, yeah, she can email them, but.
I'll give you Lori Benson's number.
Yeah, okay.
Great, thank you very much. Is Mr. Iada in the audience, and Mr. Alcolasi? May you let them in, please, because we have a 7:15 hearing. I'll accept a motion to open the hea, is it 7:15? Yes, it is. I'll accept a motion to open the hearing.
All right, I move to open the 7:15 public hearing, the application for annual on-premise 12 all alcohol beverage restaurant license to be exercised at 274 Main Street Wareham to Nazee Alcolasi as the manager.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to open the hearing, would you please read the hearing notice, which was posted in the paper for two weeks?
Yes, notice of public hearing, notice is hereby given to the Select Board as received, received an application from Burger Lux Corporation, DBA Burger Lux, Nazee Alcolasi, manager for special legislation, home rule petition, 12 all alcohol beverage restaurant license to be exercised at 274 Main Street Wareham, Mass. 02571. Premise described as single-story building contained approximately 2,052 square feet with two entrances and four exits consisting of dining lounge, bar area, service area, kitchen, and two restrooms, seating inside capacity of 70, outdoor patio with additional seating for 24 patrons. It is ordered that a virtual public hearing be held on said application on Tuesday, January 21st, 2025, during the Select Board meeting at approximately 7:15 PM, meeting to be held in person and remotely, link on the agenda.
We already have a motion and a second to open the hearing, I will now do a roll call for that, to open the hearing, Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The hearing is open, Mr. Iada and Mr. Alcolasi, would you identify yourselves for the record, and I'm guessing that Mr. Iada will be doing the presentation, is that correct?
That's correct, Madam Chair, John Iada, McDermott, Cold D, Miller &amp; Hanley, located at 28 State Street in Boston, on behalf of the applicant, Burger Lux Corporation, business Burger Lux, joining me is Nazee Alcolasi, Mr. Alcalasi can provide his address, I know he is a resident of the town, but go ahead, Mr. Alcalasi.
His mic's not working?
Yeah, you, you're muted.
Mic's not working, he's not muted, his mics aren't working.
Oh. Okay, we do have your address on the application.
Yeah, I can hold this off, I can provide the presentation, and hopefully.
Yeah, we have the documentation we have, including the green cards, and the application is totally complete.
Is that working now?
Yes, oh, great.
All right, very well, okay, again, Madam, Madam Chair, Member of the Board, my name is Nazee Alcalasi, and I reside at 20 Tower Terrace, Wareham, Massachusetts.
Thank you. Mr. Iada?
Thank you, Madam Chair, so this is an application for one of the new special legislation home rule petition license, as was stated, the location's 274 Main Street, as everyone I'm sure is very aware, this is a premise, property that has not been open for quite some time, has the former cleaners, I think it's been closed for approximately a dozen years or so, so is much need of plan to revitalize it and to maximize the use here. Mr. Alcalasi is the sole officer-director shareholder, as well as the proposed manager of record for this business, and the plan here is, as I stated before, is to revitalize the property and the premise, which we believe will really enhance the downtown area. The concept we're, we're seeking is for a gastropub, focuses on fresh ingredients, fresh food, there'll be signature burgers, sandwiches, hearty appetizers, it will be offering both lunch and dinner service, and we believe that the public need will be met specific to this, the town did address this, they set aside certain areas of the town that were in need of economic stimulus in the passage of the special legislation, and this is one of those properties that fits that description. Mr. Alcalasi, he's committed to make this a family-friendly location, casual atmosphere, a great restaurant, which will create a new destination for residents and visitors. He does have prior experience in the alcohol and restaurant industry, prior to his experience as a developer and a public servant, he attended bartending school, having worked in three restaurants throughout Southern Mass and Rhode Island, both in Dennis and Swansea, as well as in Providence. It's been some time, but he is recently tip certified as well, and before the opening, all staff will be tip certified and trained. In terms of the actual alcohol service, it will be conducted by trained waitstaff, so anyone ordering alcohol will do so through the, through the waitstaff, and there'll be table service. As proposed, as mentioned, there's, will be 70 seats inside, as well as an outdoor patio, really looking to maximize the space and, and have a nice enjoyable spot in the warmer weather, I know today is not one of those days, but eventually we'll get there. And again, hours of operation 10:30 to 11:00, so we're not looking for any late hours, something that's respectable and respecting the neighbors as well, and in the other area businesses, but we think this would be a great opportunity to revitalize the space, and there's quite a bit of work to go, but we're confident that we're going to get it done, and looking forward to this opportunity. I'll certainly open it up for any questions, and certainly for myself or Mr. Alcalasi, if you have any.
I just want to thank you very, very much for opening burger place, especially there, that has been a huge eyesore in this town for many years now, and I'm very happy to see that it's being refurbished into something this town needs, thank you.
I have a couple of questions, gentlemen, when I look at the floor plan, is the, which is the side that's actually facing the street, the, the outdoor seating is in the back, I'm taking it?
That's actually the front, I believe, right Nazee?
Yes, Madam Chair, it's in the front, the seating.
Oh.
If you look at.
Small building.
Okay, and then, what about parking, sir? How many spaces for parking do you have?
Parking will be at the neighboring parcel at 270 Main Street, we did provide a parking license agreement, so that, that site will be improved as well, for a lot for, for the parking.
Okay, have you gone before the planning board?
No.
We have not, subject to that.
Okay. I just want to explain for the public, the special legislation, a few years ago, the town petitioned the legislature for five additional liquor licenses for Main Street, basically from Bridge Landing through Tremont Nail as an economic stimulus, as Mr. Iada has said. Unfortunately, some businesses have gone out of business this past year, I think we actually lost four licenses, but those, those special legislation licenses, the opportunity for them expires December 31st of this year, and that's why I believe you have applied for this license at this time, am I correct? Okay.
Correct. I'm not gonna, yes, I mean, that is true, what I read is the legislation, and I could be wrong, I believe it was passed in, let me just see if I have it here, December 28th, it was approved 2022, and I believe it had three years from its passage, so unless my math is wrong, I think we have a whole entire of the year, but in any event, we do have an application present, so it should not be an issue, I hope either way.
Yep, okay, and we, we actually have extras. And the, I'm sorry, did you say when you think you might have it open?
We did not say that, I mean, fingers crossed, all considered, we are hoping, and Mr. Alcalasi can correct me if, if he's aware of any changes, but hoping by year end, is really the goal here.
Thank you.
All right, I move to close the hearing for 7:15 for the application for an annual on-premise 12 all alcohol beverage restaurant license to be exercised at 274 Main Street Wareham, Mass. to Nazee, God, I'm sorry, Alcalasi, manager.
Motion made and seconded to close the hearing, any further discussion on the motion to close the hearing? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, aye, the hearing is closed, I will accept a motion.
I move to approve the application for an annual on-premise 12 all alcohol beverage restaurant license to be exercised at 274 Main Street Wareham, Massachusetts, Nazee Alcalasi, manager.
Second.
I'm going to ask you to add to that, pending all of the documentation, pending a occupancy permit, and you will have to go before the planning board, and I'm going to ask you to discuss the fee after this, after you maybe made that part of your motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Motion made and seconded to approve pending all of the documentation, any further discussion on the motion to grant? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Normally, we have a fee of about $21.50, something like that, but if you're not going to be opening until, I'm guessing, at least after the end of July?
Yeah, I mean, I don't see that happening prior to that, but.
Okay. I'll, I'll accept a motion to prorate the, which we have done for other premises, for maybe half the fee, or three quarters, or one quarter of the fee.
It'd be half, half the fee if it's July, I mean, we're in January.
Mr. Alcalasi, are we looking maybe at end of September, maybe?
No, we're looking most likely towards December.
Okay.
An eighth?
Yeah, so.
Prorate for an eighth of the fee?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to prorate the fee to be one-eighth, any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, we will go for a roll call vote, Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. We will work with you on that, Mr. Alcalasi and Mr. Iada, I want to thank you, Mr. Iada, I love your applications, they are this thick, and we don't need to ask any questions.
Fully informed, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Gentlemen, thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Alcalasi, for investing in the downtown area, we very much appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good night.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, let's go back to the senior workoff.
Houseless or calling hometown, or, you want to do this one first?
No, let's do the senior workoff.
Do which one?
Senior workoff, A. Okay, the senior workoff program is a program that we authorize every year, we, the Select Board, in the past, we've had a, a limit of about $39,000, and the workoff amount was Anyone over the age of 65 can apply, who is a resident and a homeowner can apply to work for the town and have those hours and the, the amount that he or she has worked deducted against their real estate tax bill. In looking at it, I made these, I'm making the suggestion that we go to a limit of, that it, that the amount would be limited to $1,000 instead of the $1,250, and people would be working 65 hours to earn, earn that deduction, if you will, and we would be raising the income to be $45,000 for an individual and $50,000 for a household of two. I've run those figures by Sharon Rice at the Council on Aging, and she believes that they're much more appropriate than the limits that we had before, so I would ask that, oh, an applicant, this is a fairly lengthy application, and it is administered by Sharon Rice, the Council on Aging Chair, Director, and there are many forms that have to be filled out, we do not know any of the information, we simply might know the names of the people who, who are able to do this, and Ms. Rice works with the assessor's office after the individual has worked whatever hours he or she has worked.
So to apply for this program, where do you go?
You can go to the Council on Aging, you can go online.
Okay.
Yeah, and the, the, this has draft on it, but. Yeah, and the, this has draft on it, but as of tomorrow, it won't say draft on it. But Ms. Rice will have copies of it.
And what kind of work do you do?
Ah, anything that you, like, it might be filing, it might be licking envelopes, it might be filing books. It depends on the department. And Mr. Sullivan and Dorian Allen England asked the department heads which, if they would like to participate in the program, so it's up to them. I know in the past, the clerk's office has made a lot of use, as has, I think, the library. So you don't have to be able to lift anything. Well, I think there's some limitation, but it's not hard manual labor. It's not swinging a pickaxe or something like that. Particularly if you have computer skills, that would be helpful.
And it's 65 hours over the course of a year?
Yes, and the, but the year ends October. So you would apply now, and you would be working through the summer, through the spring and the summer, and the program would end in October.
All right, thank you.
And the 65 hours is total, not per week or anything, or, you know, month, or it's just the 65 hours total. This is a program under Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5K, and it's a wonderful program.
I agree with that. It's awesome.
So I will accept a motion, including the new limits, please.
Sorry, say that again.
The new limits.
Yep. I move to vote to authorize the 2025 senior tax work off program policy with a new limits of, yep, $1,000. Even on the real estate taxes, for their primary residents, the pay rate is $15 an hour, Massachusetts minimum wage.
And?
There we go. Annual income must not exceed $45,000 for an individual and $50,000 for two persons.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve, as read. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. I will note for the record that only one member of a household can apply and be engaged in this program.
Okay, another question.
Yep.
So Jared mentioned $15 an hour.
Mm-hmm.
Do they get paid, or is that sort of against their taxes?
It goes, yeah. So they have to fill out a time slip like everybody else, okay? They have to do a Cory story. There's a whole lot of paperwork that Ms. Rice will help them fill out. And at the, at the end of their program, they hand this in to her, she gets it to, well, the department head signs off, gives it back, then goes to accounting, and then through the assessor's office, the abatement, if you will, is applied.
Okay.
We can ask the newspaper to put that out there.
Okay. Okay, excellent, thank you. Discussion regarding the transportation delivery permit for alcoholic beverages. This is something that I wasn't really familiar with, but I am now. Through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, an owner of a location selling alcohol can apply through the Commonwealth only for a permit to deliver booze. And we have nothing to do with it. We don't have anything to say about it. I would like to have, you know, an understanding that we would be advised by people who have applied for this, that they are doing it. But it's about $200. The state asks that the company let you, let them know the names and the operators of the vehicles that would be delivering. So it's just another way of doing business.
So I will say one thing right now. I think Uber Eats has been delivering alcohol for the last couple of years, and before that was Drizly.
Oh, yeah, Drizly, yep.
So, I mean, I could Uber Eats a bottle of whiskey, and you'd be here in about 15 minutes, so. For us to, do we, how many businesses in town do we have that are actually delivering alcohol?
We have one. And they let us know about the program, actually. So if there are other people delivering alcohol without that license from the Commonwealth, you should go online and apply for it. It's very easy.
Interesting.
Yeah. So that's, we had no action necessary there. We do need to vote on the seasonal population guesstimate for the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission on an annual basis. What we do is we take our last census figure, which is 23,000 people, and we double it. And so I would accept a motion to have 46,000 be the amount that we put on that piece of paper.
All right. I move to set seasonal population increase to provide the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, ABCC, to 46,000 people.
Second.
Motion made in second to alert the ABCC that our seasonal population would be 46,000 people. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself? Yes, it is so. Mr. Chadwick, would you please read the process for calling the town meeting?
Yes, process for calling town meeting, April 28th, 2025, general business, May 6th, 2025, town election. Tuesday, January 21st, 2025, Wareham Select Board establishes all dates for completion of a warrant for the Springtown meeting. Tuesday, February 4th, 2025, Wareham Select Board votes to hold the Springtown meeting on April 28th, 2025, and to provide notice thereof on February 4th, 2025. Wareham Home Rule Charter 2-4A and C to open warrant effective Friday, February 14th, 2025. Wareham Home Rule Charter 2-4C, 10-day notice before warrant closes. Wednesday, February 5th, 2025, last dated post upon Town Principal Bulletin Board and Town Website, notice of intention, Wareham Select Board to call Springtown meeting for April 28th, 2025, and to post February 14th, 2025, open in February 2020, February 28th, 2025, closing dates of the warrant, Wareham Home Rule Charter 2-4C, 24 hours after voting the date warrant opens. Monday, February 24th, 2025, last day for articles to be inserted in the warrant. The last day for submission of citizen petition articles for insertion in the warrant is Monday, February 24th, 2025, by 5:00 PM at the Office of the Wareham Select Board Memorial Town Hall, 54 Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts. Wareham Home Rule Charter, Section 2-4C, 10 days or more after warrant opens. Tuesday, February 25th, 2025, Wareham Select Board officially closes the warrant, Wareham Home Rule Charter 2-4C, 10 days or more after warrant opens. Monday, March 3rd, 2025, last dated post upon Town Principal Bulletin Board and the Town Website and deliver a copy of the warrant to the Town Moderator and to the Chairman of the Finance Committee, Wareham Home Rule Charter, Section 2-4D, warrant to deliver no later than second Monday in March. Monday, April 28th, 2025, Commendations of General Business Portion of Springtown Meeting, Bylaw Division 1, Article 1, Section 1, Springtown meeting shall be held on the fourth Monday of April. Tuesday, May 6th, Election Day, Bylaw Division 1, Article 1, Section 1, first Tuesday of the month of May.
So we read that into the record. There's no vote necessary. That will be posted, and I believe next week we will be actually setting up the warrant. So, thank you. Ms. Quirk has asked that we hold the review of boards and committee vacancy list until the next meeting. So I would ask for a motion, one motion, and just keep reading.
All right. I move to accept the following donations to the Wareham Council on Aging. Owen Otto and Bethany Del Lima, an amount of $1,000. Susan Nolan and John Nolan, an amount of $500. Willard White and Sharon White, an amount of $100. Lee Charlton and Francesca Charlton, an amount of $50. Rita Barnett, an amount of $100. Judy Santos and Russell Santos, an amount of $100.
Second.
Motion made in second to accept those donations. Any further discussion on the motion to accept the donations? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself? Yes, it is so. No 48-hour business. The town administrator told me that he did not have anything to report to us tonight, so I did excuse him from the meeting. But we do have two sets of minutes.
How about liaison reports?
Oh, yeah.
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 Ms. Corbett?
Um, as you mentioned, I'm a liaison for the Council on Aging Board of Directors, and so appreciative of the two people who stepped forward there looking for more members. So please see Sharon Rice, the Director of the Council on Aging, if you'd like to join the Council on Aging Board of Directors. And they recently adopted a new set of guidelines, which will be posted online shortly on the page for the Council on Aging Board of Directors on the town website. I'm a liaison to the Recycling Committee, and I'll bring it next time, but they have created a nice handout that shows what they take and what they don't take at the recycling center. And I thought that was really useful information. And they'll be posting it in different places around town, at the library, in Town Hall, at municipal maintenance, at the recycling center itself. So I thought that was really useful. And one of their members is doing a project that involves many, many, many wine corks. So they will be having a wine cork depository at the recycling center. So if you want to keep your corks and put them there, they would appreciate it. And Library Board of Trustees is also always looking for new members. So that's it.
Thank you.
Yes. I don't know if everyone saw, Wareham High School, actually myself and Wareham High School have been working closely over the last year to bring an EMT program to the high school. We're kind of narrowing down all the stuff right now. As it looks, we will hopefully be having an EMT program that will last throughout the entire year. And once the seniors graduate from high school at the age of 18, they will be able to challenge the state tests and come out with an EMT certificate. And that's the starting steps. Obviously, I would love, and I've heard it from other schools, that there is a kind of a junior fire academy that would allow 18-year-olds to come out their senior year with firefighter one or firefighter one and two. And they could literally, at the age of 18, come out and go right into the fire service. My goal ultimately would really be able to see that happen in the next couple of years. It is a lot of work. Like I said, we have been working on this for a year. And hopefully, we have enough seniors that are very interested in it. I've done a lot of hard work on this, and I'll be very proud once it rolls out. Two more things. I've seen people posting online that they have issues or they're having a hard time trying to open up a new business in town. I just want to put out there, my phone number's been put out publicly, my personal cell phone number. The office has permission to give it out. I'm all for new businesses opening up in town. If there's any way I can help in my spare time, you know, if I'm not on shift, I'm more than willing to come down and meet with you. I know I'm meeting with one business tomorrow to kind of help them in any way I possibly can, steer them in the right direction. So my number's been out there for three years, and that doesn't only go for small businesses. I've met with quite a few people in this town. If you have an issue and you're respectful about it, then I'll gladly meet with you and see whatever I can do. I'm not going to make any promises to anything, but I'm here and I'm a people person. Lastly, this is still in the very beginning stages, but I got some positive news today. Right now, we are looking at the possibility of putting 10 AEDs throughout Wareham in public places. There will be training provided by the Plymouth County District Attorney's Office. This, like I just said, is still in the very early stages. I would like to see this rolled out before the summertime, but it's going to be with the help of the Plymouth County District Attorney's Office as well as Brad Allen, the Wareham EMS Director. I think that's it.
Thank you. I just have one, and it's something that would have been an announcement, but there is a public meeting on Tuesday, January 28th, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM at the Wareham Public Library Community Room. The purpose of the meeting is to, and I'll read it, "Please join us for a meeting to discuss conceptual plans to ecologically restore coastal wetlands of the Jacks Marsh Crooked River Site located at the Great Neck Conservation Area." That's off of Indian Neck Road and Crooked River Road. "Come learn about the river's resources and the threats to them at this site. Conceptual design alternatives for addressing these programs, problems have been developed and will be presented. The public is invited to attend and comment, and an RSVP is encouraged. The project partners include Town of Wareham, Buzzards Bay Coalition, Wildlands Trust, Buzzards Bay National Estuary Program, and the Massachusetts Division of Ecological Restoration." And I'm going to give this to the press so that they could please do that. Again, it's next Tuesday from 6:00 to 7:00 PM.
An RSVP is encouraged, so who do they RSVP to?
Um, I will read that. Either Evelyn Mortimer from the Coalition at 508-999-6363, extension 270, or Mortimer at savebuzzardsbay.org. And again, the paper, if they would put that in the paper, that would be great. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
And that's it.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh-uh, no, 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 no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgot the minutes. Forgot the minutes. I move to approve the select board meeting minutes of January 7th, 2025, and the meeting minutes of January 13th, 2025.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself? Yes, it is so. Now.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made in second to adjourn. It is not debatable. I will ask for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself? Yes, it is so. And good evening, Wareham. It's 8:46, I believe. Thank you.